Hello and welcome to the Candidate Forum for Candidates for Forest Lake City Council. I'm Mary Santi, a member of League of Women Voters from outside of Forest Lake, and I'll be your moderator. League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan volunteer organization which encourages people to participate in government. We support voter education and voter rights. Though the League studies and takes positions on issues, we do not support or oppose any candidates or any political party. Our goal is to allow your citizens to learn about the positions of candidates who will be on the ballot November 5th. All candidates who filed to run for this position were invited to participate, and today we have Jeff Larson, Hannah Valento, and Jesse Wagner. Susan Young was not able to be here, but I have a statement that I'll read for her. You'll be elected two members to the city council. For our forum ed, candidates will have one minute to introduce themselves, and this will be in alphabetical order. That will be followed by questions. Candidates have a minute for questions, and the order of speaking will rotate among you, and I'll give you a cue when it's your turn. Questions were received in advance from the public and reviewed by a team of League of Women Voters members. We will not use questions that are unclear, hostile, or of a personal nature, and we have consolidated questions that fall in the same topic area. During questions, candidates have one minute. They have an opportunity for rebuttal, three opportunities. They each have three cards that will allow them, after all the candidates have answered a question and you want to add something or rebut something, hold up a card, and you'll get 30 seconds extra for that. You have three of those. Our timekeeper will show a warning sign of 30 and 15 seconds, and then a stop, and at that time, you can complete your sentence. And before you begin the opening statements, I'll read the one I have from Susan Young. Greetings. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for providing this forum. I'm unable to attend the forum as I am in Texas for the marriage of my daughter. My parents and grandparents modeled service as the duty and privilege of living in a community. I have more than 30 years of volunteer and civil service in Forest Lake. I was on the Township Planning Commission and the City Planning Commission. I was elected to the city council for 12 years. I serve on the YMCA Community Board and the Board of FLAA, and president of the Forest Lake Rotary, and vice chairman of SPEAC. These and other volunteer efforts provide opportunities to learn from residents their needs and hopes for Forest Lake and provide my vision for office. I will work to improve the financial stability of the city and the economic vitality of the residents and businesses, especially local businesses. Local businesses strongly support our community organizations and return almost $50 of every $100 spent to the community through wages and the purchase of goods and services, compared to less than $15 of a large chain. I will work to improve the hard infrastructure of the city, the water, sewer, and street systems, and the soft infrastructure of police, fire, and emergency operations. My 45 years of professional engagement in public works and city operations prove to me that city operations can be efficient and effective when supported by knowledgeable council members. I will work to build community among residents and businesses by modeling and encouraging volunteerism and community pride. For example, I am proud to be a member of the Forest Lake Beautification Group, who have coordinated the downtown planters, Triangle Garden, and the art in front of City Hall. Forest Lake is my forever home, and I hope to have your support to serve as your councilperson. For more information, my website is syoungforforestlake.com, and my email is syoung5236@gmail.com. And so then we'll begin the opening statements with Jeff Larson, who is here.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Larson, and I've been resident of Forest Lake for about six years. I've worked in this community throughout my career. I'm a 34-year veteran with the Washington County Sheriff's Department, since then retiring and moving up here to my forever home with my wife, Tracy, of 13 years. I worked for Home Depot, and I'm part of the Project Home Depot matter. I'm currently working at O'Reilly Auto Parts. I'm a volunteer at the American Legion in town as a Sons of American Legion. We do lots of volunteer work. My three points of interest are infrastructure, public safety, and the health and welfare of our lakes in the community. My objective is to draw businesses for a higher tax base in this community. I'm conservative and progressive, and if you would check out my website, Jeff Larson for Forest Lake City Council on Facebook. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
Hi, my name is Hannah Valento. I grew up in Hugo. I now live in Forest Lake, and I graduated from the Forest Lake school system. I went to University of Minnesota Duluth College for a major in human rights and justice, and eventually transferred to the Twin Cities and graduated. After that, I went to law school, graduated there, and now I currently work for the Malax Banvojibwe, a government system where they have a three-branch government. And I used to work in the legislative branch and now work for the executive branch. I have experience at the state level, city level, and tribal level, and I've worked for all three branches of government. So from that background, I love government, and I love to see how government operates. Currently, I'm on the Forest Lake City Council, and I've also volunteered within the community doing English as a second language, and I am a rotarian on the board, and I encourage others to join Rotary as well. Thank you.
Jesse Wagner.
Hi, my name is Jesse Wagner. I grew up in Forest Lake. I was born here and lived here pretty much my whole life. I've worked in Forest Lake, had a couple different jobs in Forest Lake. I currently work in White Bear Township for a specialty manufacturing company as a continuous improvement technician. And I've raised my son here in Forest Lake as a single dad, and it's been an awesome community to do so. And I've recently taken interest in the local government and helping out the town that we live in, and I'd like to see the town grow and offer more opportunities for people that live here to work here, and also to try and help keep some of the aging population to be able to stay in their homes by having a fiscally responsible Forest Lake. And I currently got a webpage on Facebook at Jesse Wagner for Forest Lake City Council. Thank you.
We'll turn to questions, and the first one to answer, the first question, is Hannah Valento. What skills and experience do you have that make you qualified to be a city council member in Forest Lake?
So as I mentioned, my experience and my background is government, and I love government work. Again, I've worked at the state level, the city level, and tribal level, and I've also worked in all three branches of government. And I'll probably be in government my entire life because I just love it. I find it extremely interesting to see how different governments interact with one another and how they can just collaborate and how it can be a very positive experience for everyone involved, and that ripple affects out into the community. And currently, I'm on the Forest Lake City Council. I'm currently serving in my first term, and so I'm running for my second term. And my other experience is just being in the community and this just being my community for, I would say, my entire life. I love this community, and there's so much that we can do for this community in progressing it, but also acknowledging the historical aspects of it, and I'd like to continue serving the community. Thank you.
Jeff Larson.
I've been involved in some city functions here with, I'm on the Planning Commission and also on the Economic Development Authority for the last two years. I think my involvement through my employment, I was a contract deputy for several cities, so I was involved in lots of local community government functions through them. I think my commitment to community, as far as being in the community, going to Arts in the Park, volunteer work with the American Legion, we collect school supplies for the kids, we do Christmas stuff for the kids for the Legion. I think you just need to be involved in the community to be part of the community. And I look forward to maybe possibly having the position to further my progression with the city as a council member. Thank you.
Jesse Wagner.
I believe that I've been a part of this community for all my life, and I believe that this community is progressing into the correct direction. I've had a booth at Arts in the Park. I have a small crafting business, and I've been down there for a few years. I also volunteer at my church, and I've been helping on the Planning Commission for this year. Just started that and started kind of getting my interest in government and been watching all the old city council meetings and trying to learn a little bit more about the great community of Forest Lake. Thank you.
All right. Next question, Jesse, you'll begin. If elected, what would be your top two priorities for the city, and how would you move these priorities forward?
I guess my top two priorities would be, first of all, trying to help small businesses move to this town by trying to help go through some of the red tape and see what we can change and what we can make so that it's a little more business-friendly for small businesses as well as larger businesses that we need. And also, I'd like to work on trying to make the town a little more user-friendly downtown. The downtown seems to be aging, and it would be nice to kind of give it a revitalization and try and help get more people involved with Arts in the Park and other community activities that we have going on here. Thank you.
Next, Jeff Larson.
I think a lot of it, our strong point is with our community, our downtown, our 10-year plan, continue to work on our 10-year plan for downtown, our focus on securing more businesses in the community, bringing new blood to the community. I guess whatever we can do to help draw, and being in, attending some of the city council meetings, seeing that our 10-year plan has been progressing well, and we've drawn some good businesses here to our community, and I hope we can move forward with that. The other thing is our infrastructure in our town with our roadways. That's a considerable topic. We're going to be doing some work with that. I'd like to see that progress more. Hopefully, I can get more involved in that and move that down the path for better for our community. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
My top, I have three top priorities, so I'll pick two. My top two priorities would be supporting our 10-year budget plan. So some background on our 10-year budget plan is being on the council for four years. We didn't have a 10-year budget plan for the first two years, and looking back, I don't know how the city operated for so long without a budget plan in place, because with a budget plan and with a 10-year budget plan, you can proactively plan things that need to be fixed, such as our parks, our roads, all of the maintenance. Like, for example, we just started fully funding roads last year, and we just started looking at the buildings that need to be maintained that are city-owned, which is crazy that that just started to be considered. I could go on about that one, so just continuing to follow that 10-year budget plan. The next one is supporting economic development, because as we all know, downtown, it needs to be revitalized, and in doing that, I think we can bolster our EDA and just work with community members to get those business partners here.
Thank you. And the next, go to the next question. We'll begin with Jeff Larson. As a city council member, how would you solicit feedback from the community and engage with
I think promoting the city council meetings to our community, being involved in community activities, Arts in the Park, our Fourth of July celebration, being out and available to the community. Other cultures have other functions and stuff, is being available to go to some of those other functions and be a voice for them at their celebrations for the city and answer any questions they may have, also through Facebook, social media, projects, and things like that. But just to make yourself available, either by phone, or email, or other forms of communication, but having yourself wholeheartedly available to the community, so they feel comfortable with coming to you and asking you questions or being felt more involved in the community. Thank you.
Jesse Wagner.
I have to agree with Jeff that we do need a little bit more social media presence. It's been, most people don't hear about city council meetings when they are, because a lot of people don't go to the Forest Lake website. It would be nice to do some sort of a mailing at least once a year to people to allow them to know what our website is, to allow them to know what our YouTube channel is, and other places that it's easier to find information, as well as, it'd be nice to set up in all kinds of different community events, you know, maybe even have a booth at like Homecoming Games and stuff like that, where the community's out and about and they can come and see you and talk to you in person. And having phone calls and emails available would be nice. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
I think pretty much what Jesse and Jeff both said, that in order to solicit feedback, I mean, like, government isn't, and I hate using this word, but government isn't sexy, but knowing and letting people know that their voices matter and what they say matters, and we take it into consideration. And so encouraging folks to send us emails, send us phone calls. And there are five of us up on city council, so if you can't reach one, I hope you can reach at least someone else or multiple people. Our city administrators should also be available for phone calls and emails and answering those questions along with other folks. But then having that Facebook presence and being out in the community. I think something that we can do is be out in the community more at Arts in the Park, at the hometown holidays, at Homecoming. I love that idea. And just making sure that we are present out there and that we are encouraging folks to let us know what your issues are in hopes of helping with those issues and potentially fixing them.
Thank you. And Hannah, you'll begin the next question. Some of you have touched on this topic already. What do you believe the city council should do to ensure businesses thrive?
So I think for businesses to thrive, I think there's a lot of aspects that our community can do, and then for our city council and what our city can do. Historically, Forest Lake hasn't been known as a pro-business community, and it makes me sad to say that, and I'm hoping that we are moving in that right direction of being pro-business and really working with our businesses who are here already, but also encouraging other businesses to come to Forest Lake. We have a great opportunity, as I think we've all mentioned, of our downtown, and our citizens are wanting that and just desiring that walkability, that great experience that you can have in the downtown. And I think as long as we continue to bolster our EDA, and the EDA also works in collaboration with the Forest Lake Chamber of Commerce, we can get there and we can have that great relationship with the businesses. And I hope that if businesses have a hard time with their experience within Forest Lake, I hope they're reaching out to EDA, to council members, to city administrators or staff to make that experience better.
Jesse Wagner.
I've been friends with several business owners in Forest Lake over the years, and a lot of them say that there's a lot of issues with dealing with the city, and part of it is sign ordinances. It'd be nice to allow for digital signs. I've had several people tell me that they've tried to put up digital signs, and they've been shot down from the city council and from the city administration. As well as liquor stores that have sales on, they used to be able to put up banners, and then that was taken away from them without having to buy additional permits. And I think that we need to start supporting these businesses when they're going to have sales and allow them to put signage up that's temporary without having to pay a large amount of fees and stuff, and also to try and allow more progressive digital signs. The wave of the future is going to be digital signs, and it would be nice to be able to have that available for our business owners. Thank you.
Jeff Larson.
We've covered it pretty good, our topic here, so I echo what my other two opponents have said already about it. But being on the EDA board, I think we bring an open-arms approach, listening to the community and to our business people. We welcome new businesses. I know some of our city staff has been out soliciting to some groups, looking to draw more businesses in the community. We have a Headwaters 123 district, which I know we're trying to pull some anchor business into that area as well. But working with our city with permitting and ordinances and zoning to make that a little more easier process, I know that's been a strong point for a lot of builders and businesses. They've struggled a little bit, and hopefully, we can also help push that and make that a lot easier for business people to come to our community, and we open them with open arms. Thank you.
And then Jeff, you'll begin the next question. In what ways do you see city zoning regulations and building codes getting in the way of more affordable housing?
Uh-huh. As I kind of just touched a little bit here on the last question, I know when this, before when the township and the city were separate entities, and now the township has become the city, there's been zoning and ordinances and codes and things for the township and also from the city. The city has taken an approach here finally to sit down with our organization and fine-tune that to make it a lot more user-friendly and not so redundant and things like that. I think that's probably a big topic for that, but the businesses, I think, will benefit now in what we've improved with that, and I support that wholeheartedly through our action with the EDA and the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Next is Hannah Valento.
As Jeff mentioned, when Forest Lake, the city, absorbed the township, they essentially just meshed the two ordinances, which creates problems. And from that, they weren't really amending the ordinances in an appropriate manner to be progressive and keep up with the times. And so now with our housing and a shortage of housing, we need to, and desperately need to, look at our ordinances, but that is a tall task, and it takes a very long time because it's not only city council's job to amend the ordinances, but we also include the Planning Commission and the community within that process, and we want to get it right. And a couple, I think it was two years ago, we did make an amendment, because with Forest Lake, we typically wanted bigger lots for houses, but we knew that that was a struggle for the houses being built, so we did take the time with the Planning Commission and other folks in the room to come together and to make an amendment to our zoning code. And so we're getting there, but we just need to keep working a little bit harder on that.
Jesse Wagner.
I have to agree with both of them. We, I'm on the Planning Commission, and we have started the process, which is going to be a long process, of organizing the building codes, making it easier to read, making it easier to find information when you need it, and so that the smaller builders that have never dealt with our process will be able to come into town and be able to build some of the new housing and make it a little more economical for people. Thank you.
Okay. Jesse, you'll begin the next question. But changes, if any, should be made to the current arrangements with the Forest Lake Lake Association.
I believe that the city, I grew up on Clear Lake, and the city, the lakes are a great asset to everybody in the city, I believe, and I think we need to have the city have a little more role in making sure our lakes are well-known and easy accessible for everybody, as well as to help control some of the Eurasian mill foil, as well as some of the zebra mussels that have been coming into our lakes. And I think that us as a community should get together and try and protect our lakes as they are a great asset and a great place to hang out in our warm summers. Thank you.
Jeff Larson.
I think the Water Association has been doing a phenomenal job. I've also, I'm a donating member to their cause. I live on the lake here in town. They've done a lot of work on it, testing, they've been treating the water for phosphorus, and as Jesse was saying, they're paying attention to like zebra mussel issues. We've got people at our boat launches checking boats that are coming in and out, make sure they don't transport any hazardous or harmful species into our lake. We're doing a lot of weed control, they go out and do weed extraction, weed-eating machine that they run around on the lake. It's a continual effort, and I bolster and appreciate all the work that they've done, and I'll do anything that on the council that we can do to help effectively add or dedicate our services to help them with our lakes and our community. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
I didn't grow up on a lake, and I don't live on a lake, but I think as Minnesotans, we can all agree that we all love our lakes, and we appreciate our lakes, and we want to protect our lakes. And so currently being, within the last four years, on city council, I've really come to realize that we have a really good relationship with our lake associations, at least from my perspective, and I hope that that's true. And if it's not, I want us to get to that point where we have that great relationship and we continue to work together to make sure that our lakes are in great condition. And we also work really well with the Comfort Lake Forest Lake Watershed District, and we're always in collaboration in trying to best maintain our lakes and get them to a really good place that we all want them to be, and I think we can all share, again, that goal of protecting our lakes.
Hannah Valento, you'll begin the next question. Forest Lake currently operates under a 10-year capital improvement plan, CIP. What changes, if any, would you want to make to that plan?
Yes, so as one of my top priorities is the 10-year budget plan. I think it's just, again, important to highlight that for the longest time, we were operating without a 10-year budget plan. So when people, the people's biggest complaints were parks and roads, and so when someone would be like, hey, when are we going to redo this road? We would, I, as a council member, would not be able to give them an answer because we were not proactively planning any of that. And so when we got our 10-year budget plan, it was like an epiphany happened for all of us, where we were like, we can finally visually see what's happening here. And so we can see the parks that need to be redone, we can see the roads that need to be redone, and strategically plan the years coming in the future for when those are going to get redone based on the state that they're in currently. And so we have fully funded our roads as of last year, and one thing that we have left to fund is our parks. And so we are slowly but surely getting there, and it's just that balancing act of getting those amenities, but then being fiscally responsible.
Jesse Wagner.
I believe our 10-year budget plan right now is pretty robust, but I'd like to also see a little more community input in what we do with our funds that we get here. You know, maybe as a community, we can put out a survey to the You know, maybe as a community, we can put out a survey to, to the local populace and see what the, everybody would like to do as improvements to this town, and to see, you know, more of what everybody would be interested in and could help our community grow for families as well as for the retirees that live here and the general working population that lives here. Thank you.
Jeff Larson.
Like Hannah was explaining here, I think our 10-year plan is, was a phenomenal idea. I've been monitoring that over the last two years. When I ran for council two years ago, they were working on that and adopting it. I think they've been executing that rather well. There's still plenty to do. I think we still have a lot to work to do for the downtown area in promoting businesses and housing, et cetera, in the area here. Our streets and roads, the, they're going to be working on North Shore Trail next year. That is something that's been, something in the plans for quite a while, but they're finally going to get moving on that, and they're going to be redoing also Highway 8, which will be a nice connect for our, our community as well. Affordable housing, we're working with that, with grants and things like that. We got some stuff coming through that we'll be working with, with the county, and hopefully we can adapt and draw more to the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jessie Wagner will begin the next question. What would be your approach to working with the mayor and other council members who may not share your outlook on controversial issues?
I believe that in this town, we all kind of want the same thing, is to get the community to be more robust and friendlier place for the families and businesses. And I believe that we can all sit down and discuss calmly and understand what each other's opinions are, and work together to come up with a solution that is good not only for today, but also for tomorrow's future of this town. And I think that would be nice to work together and come up with good solutions. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
So I always say, people never agree all the time, so you never even agree with your spouse all the time, and disagreements are bound to happen. But I think as we'd all be adults up on city council, we can do it in a mature fashion and have that conversation. And I think when it comes to disagreements, you always just have to remember the other person's viewpoint. So getting to walk in their shoes a little bit and understand why it is that you may be disagreeing. And I think you can still be respectful in that manner. And as Jessie said, I think we all have similar goals for the community, and we all love this community. And with how politics have become so divisive lately, I think it's just important to remain calm, respectful, and understanding of the person's viewpoints, and knowing that even though you might not disagree, you, we can all still get there in a positive fashion at the end of the day. And even if it's a four-to-one vote, and you might be that one, just moving on and knowing that that might happen, and that's okay.
You. Jeff Larson.
I think it's good to have diversity on the council. Not everybody probably shares the same ideas and interests with each other, but we do respect each other's opinions and voices. And we are the voice of the community, so hopefully we get feedback from other people, and they can bring some inset to, to what they would like. And as being a member on the council, then we should be able to share that with each other and agree to disagree, but yet explain why our opinion is such, why we believe in that. It's not saying that we can't be swayed one way or another, but I believe that we all should have an opinion and be able to work with each other in a respectful manner, as like my other candidates has mentioned earlier. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jeff, you'll begin the next question. What concerns do you have, if any, about expansion of the Forest Lake Airport?
Well, I think the airport is, has been, is a valuable asset here to the community. I'm not, I don't know too much about the airport in, in that function. I do need to probably dig deeper into more of the, the issues at hand with it. I know they've done some extensive work out there in improving the runways and platforms and such. There is a little bit of discussion on how some of the property hangers and stuff are being used. I guess that probably needs to be looked into a little bit more and defined as far as its, its uses and such. But I don't, I don't really have a deep dig into the airport at this time, but I'm, I will be looking into it further. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
So the airport, with the airport, expansion is coming, and the airport commission works with an engineer from Boltland Bank to create those plans. And so they plan out years in advance, the expansions that are coming. And, and with that, with the expansions as well, the, the city only funds 5% of it, and MNDOT and the state funds 95% of it. So it's usually, it's a really good deal for the city. And I think the one issue that we have with the airport in going forward is, is policy. And like the leases that we have at the airport are quite antiquated, and some of them are different and varying, so ensuring that moving forward, where there are leases and there are new hangers, that all the leases have updated language and are all uniform, along with creating and drafting a new policy that is all encompassing for if there's issues within the airport, let's look to the policy and let's have a strong policy to help us through the airport.
Thank you. Jessie Wagner.
I have to agree with Hannah on that, that the airport is a great asset, and it seems to be quite well. I know several pilots that have used the airport that don't live in our community, that have flown in to use, use our community and be around in here, as well as I know a couple pilots that house their planes there. And I believe that, like she had mentioned, that there, the policies are a little kind of different for different people, and that we need to get it all straightened out and have something clear-cut that what you can and can't do there, as well as have a little more direction on, so people know what the leases are. Thank you.
And the next question, I'll go first to you, Jessie Wagner. With continued development in the city, how will you work to ensure there are adequate resources available to maintain existing infrastructure?
I believe that our 10-year plan will continue to grow and change as we get more people in the community, as well, as well as businesses, and we can continue to look into expanding our resources. One that just came up recently is they're redoing Highway 8, and at which time, we looked into the idea of possibly putting the water main and the sewer underneath Highway 8 to serve the business development that's across this Highway 8 there. And I believe that if we continue to look for opportunities to save money and stuff like that, as well as expand our infrastructure and keep it fully funded as our roads and such, I think we will be able to keep up with the growth of Forest Lake.
You. Jeff Larson.
I think we've done a, a good job with kind of pre-planning with our population growth, our business growth and such in the community. Again, the 10-year plan has been beneficial to that. I know the council, current council and city employees have worked their budgets quite heavily. They plan for things like this, like the fire department increasing staff, increasing equipment, the same with the police department. They look at hiring new people, making improvements to their agency with software, police cars, staff, retention of our police officers that we currently have, I think is a, is the strongest point. I think we've done a good job with that, and I hope we continue to do so, and I look forward to hopefully building on it and improving that. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
As Jessie and Jeff both mentioned already, I think it comes down to the 10-year budget plan. And I think we've already seen that happen right now, because with that 10-year budget plan, we can look at the population and really get an idea of where the population has been and where it's going. And with that, where, how many like police officers we have, I know it was, I think we were planning for the 2024 budget, and, or maybe, actually might have been the 2023 budget, and we were looking at hiring more police officers, because where we were with the amount of police officers that we had was actually in line with how many police officers we had like 10 years prior. So the amount of population that we had to the amount of police officers we currently had were not aligning. And so making sure we're looking at those, those projections through the 10-year plan so that we can proactively plan and ensure that those resources will be evenly spread throughout the community as it grows and as it develops.
You. And you've all answered that one. The next question, I'll go first to Jeff Larson. The city has had an interim city administrator for eight months. What, when that position is filled, how would you define success for that individual at the end of their first year?
Well, I hope whom we choose, we do with, with open eyes, and we do thorough background work with to obtain our, our candidate for a city administrator. Hopefully our candidate is, comes in and has a good working relationship with all our departments within the city hall, as well as our city council, our planning commission, and our EDA, and is out and about in the community. To spend time, I think you need to be involved in our community, to be more involved and recognized, an open, an open communication, I guess, with the, the city administrator, make themselves available for us. I think it'll be a valuable part. I know we're, we're struggling a little bit right now with our, our city administration, and we're trying to get a candidate, but we're doing, I think, the best we can with the, the company that we're using for, for qualifications. Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie Wagner.
I believe the city administrator definitely has to be involved with all aspects of the community and be out and about, especially at community events. They're kind of the front of the community, and it would be nice to, if we could all work together with the administrator and have clear direction, as all of the departments seem to rely on a good administration to point us in the correct direction where we would like the city to go. And I believe that if the administrator does a really good job, we should easily be able to move this community forward and have more cohesiveness between all departments, as well as the volunteers and staff. Thank you.
Hannah Valento.
I think if we can hire a city administrator, and within the first year of that hire, success would be internal organization within the city staff. Currently, city staff has, has struggled with the last city administrator, and there has been struggles with the interim city administrator. And so I think getting that morale and boosting that morale within our internal organization and making sure that we hire the appropriate staff that we need because they're open positions. And so moving that internal organization just in a positive direction and encouraging staff as well, so it's a place that they want to stay, and a place that we can retain our workers. The other one is community, community involvement. Our previous city administrator was not involved in our community at all, and I, and our community, community members saw that and recognized that, and it was one of the biggest red flags that we saw. And so just getting someone out there and being a face for our internal, for, for the city. I could keep going, but I'll stop.
Thank you. This next question, you'll be the first. What steps will you take to ensure transparency and accountability in city government? And this is the last question.
Okay. So transparency in city government, I think, I think the city does a good job with that already, and I might be biased because I'm already on city council, and I've worked in governments at different capacities. But we live stream, we have open communications, whether it's email, phone calls, or in person. And again, whether that is someone on a board or commission, city council, or staff, one place I think we are, we can go in a positive direction for transparency, is similar to the last question, our city administrator. And that was what I wanted to touch on in my last answer, was that if we get a successful look like for a city administrator after the first year's communication, and because of pre, our previous city administrator, communication was also lacking. And so if we get a strong city administrator who wants to interact with our community, I think they will help propel our transparency, because they'll be a person who people can rely on, and the city administrator might not always be able to give them an, the answer they're looking for, but they'll be able to give our community members an answer.
You. Jeff Larson.
I think continuing to support the offerings of open city forums and city meetings with cable access, viewing and, and recordings, updates to our local newspaper and city websites are also great steps towards transparency and accountability. Being available via email, phone call, text, or just coming to council meeting and, and have a forum there for the community is also clarity and input. I'd also support attending neighborhood meetings, and as a representative, also would create accountability in our community. Thank you.
You. Jessie Wagner.
I have to agree with both Hannah and Jeff that we currently have a lot of ways people can view the meeting minutes and the live streams and the meetings that take place here. The one thing that I would like to try and improve is when people do come to the meetings and ask their questions, is have a way for them to get feedback on their questions, so they know that they're being heard, and rather than just, I asked a question and it just disappears, and you have to wait a year to hear back about it. I'd like to have some way of communicating back to the public that we can, we heard your question, and we're working on it, and where we're at with it. And with that, I guess, a little more advertising of when the meetings are and how to access information. Thank you.
You. And so now we'll turn to your closing statements. You'll each have a minute to summarize your qualifications and positions, and it'll go in reverse of the opening. So Jessie Wagner, you begin.
I guess in closing, I am looking to forward, if I'm elected, to work with this administration and move the city forward into a positive growth, as well as to help our community have more open communication with the public and advertising, and a little more community involvement would be nice. And that's what my goal is for the, working on the city council. Thanks.
Hannah Valento.
In closing, my name is Hannah Valento. I'm running for reelection for the Forest Lake City Council. My top priorities are to continue following our 10-year budget plan, to support our economic development, and to support and get to a positive place for our internal organization. I believe I'll bring a unique voice to the city council and continue to bring a unique voice as a younger female, and someone whose background is in government work, and will probably forever be in government work because I love it. And, and so I hope you will vote for me, and for more information about me, my website is HannahValento.com. I also have a Facebook page, and feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Jeff Larson.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the Cable Commission for recording our forum today, and I also would like to thank the League of Women Voters for putting on this event today, and our candidates for being involved in, in our forum here as well. I think the, the event of, with coming here to the city and being involved in the government forum already, with the planning commission, the EDA, being involved in the community through our Arts in the Park, and just being with American Legion and my volunteerism in the community and stuff like that, I, I greatly enjoy it. I have a service for others attitude. I think I have a strong voice and an open ear for our community, and I hope we can bring this town back up around and get it back in shape. I have a Facebook page, Jeff Larson for Forest Lake City Council. Larson for Forest Lake City Council, and if you have any questions, please send me a message, and I look forward to more meet and greet with our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that concludes our forum for Forest Lake Council. And I also want to thank the other League of Women Voters volunteers, the candidates, for putting yourself forward for the community and the cable company for airing it for us. Our website, L W V hyphen W B L A dot org, has listings for all our candidate forums and links where you can submit questions for them. You can review the recording for this and all the other forums on our YouTube channel, League of Women Voters, White Bear Lake area. And you can also look for it on the cables channels, YouTube. So thank you, and make sure to vote. Early voting has already commenced, and it will be open until November 4th. The election is the next day, November 5th. Be sure to vote. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.